I'd like to call the Special City Council Meeting in June 26, 2018 to order. Please call and move.
Kuz?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Cage?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Seabertson?
Here.
Please rise and leave it.
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Communications, we have one lay on the table, lot 5A1. Persons to be heard, there was nobody signed up at that time. Is there anybody here to speak to the council that didn't sign up? That brings us down to new business. We do have a lay on the table. Do I have a motion?
Is this a presentation or?
I think that would be more appropriate.
What, that's presentation? You want a motion to put it on the table, or do you want?
I think it could probably wait till after.
Okay.
If I could start off, Councilmember Seabertson. Under our contract with Moffett Nickel, we were to receive a 35% design submittal package, which I received a couple of weeks ago. Basically, this set of documents. And going through that package, it became clear to me that we were going to need to have Moffett Nickel walk the city council through the design because there were going to be several issues that were going to require the council's attention. Most notably is that the cost projections for the reconfiguration of Burst 1 and 2 have escalated significantly when you compare them to the initial planning estimate that we had. And Sean will walk you through that in just a couple of moments. We've discussed the option of trying to value engineer the current design to bring down the projected cost. I'm convinced at this point that we're not going to have enough time to do that and have a solid number that we can put before the community in the form of an October ballot proposition. So as a result of that, I'm recommending two motions this evening that, one, the council suspend further design work on the reconfiguration of Burst 1 and 2 while we explore alternative financing options. And then the second would be to forego the ballot proposition to the voters in October. The escalation in cost, in large part, is due to the fact that the design has evolved through both the constituent meetings, as well as input from city staff, as well as users of the port. Sean will again get into that in some detail. While we forego putting the ballot proposition and lose some time, it's also our recommendation that the council proceed with the instrumentation and modeling of the currents in Thomas Basin, and that we go ahead and move forward with final design for the removal of the rock pinnacle off Burst 2. And you have motions before you tonight to accomplish both of those tasks. At the July 5 meeting, I'll also be bringing forward another motion, which would remove the corrosion protection of Burst 1 and 2, which is an element in the current contract, so we can treat that separately from the balance of the project and move that work forward as well. As I've said to the council in the past, and I think it's worth repeating tonight, whether it's the reconfiguration of Burst 1 and 2, or our ongoing negotiations with Ketchikan Dock Company for Burst 4, I think it's incumbent upon us to take the time to get this right and not have to go back to the community later on to correct something. We need to be able to show that we've got a comprehensive plan and get community buy-in. And I think this is the best way to achieve that. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. McFarland, and I'm sure you'll have questions after he's done.
Thank you, Carl. First of all, I wanted to lead off with just an apology that I was not able to join you last week at your normally scheduled council meeting because of a personal commitment I cannot get out of. And so I recognize that this is called for another evening of your attention, and I do appreciate that. And we join you in the concern for the project and the costs that have escalated. And I'm here to represent that our team will be committed to working with you to make sure that we get this right, as Carl says, and moving forward that we do exactly what we told you we would do, which is to help you to welcome these larger cruise ships. So this is an update. Carl mentioned that we -- sorry. I'm going to jump right into additional slides. I've got the wrong presentation up here. Excuse me. Carl mentioned that we gave you our contracted 35% design. That was the Phase 1 of the project, which you have authorized us to get to 35% design and permitting. This is what is in your large packet. We've got an abbreviated set of plans. We didn't give you the full set of plans, which includes a lot of blank sheets. Frankly, 35%, as is the course of design development, as you move through it, you flush out more and more details. We gave you a list of technical specifications, so you know what's in the specs. The Class 4 cost estimate, I mentioned Class 4 because of the Class 5, at the planning level, Class 4, 3, 2, 1, as the design progresses, and each time your contingency shrinks and your estimate presumably becomes more accurate. I'm going to talk more about the estimate, which I know is a focus of attention and concern. We also provided you our base of design report, and this is just kind of a fancy way of saying, these are the things that we agree that we're building the project for, how we're designing, what are the codes, and what are the results of our various analyses that we've done. And appended to that, you'll find copies of the mooring and birthing analysis that we did for the larger class ships coming in, as well as the metocean analysis that was done, which is a fancy word for wind wave and current conditions inherent to the site. We did not give you the geotactical and geophysical reports because they were so voluminous, but Steve Corpron has those, so they're available for inspection. They've been delivered to the city, so you have what you paid for. So that was in the package that we gave to the city for review on June the 11th. The second element or lobe of our work currently authorized is the permitting, or approximately 90% complete. We really need to be able to get to the 35% design in order to finalize the permit plans and the permit application. But we have had the agency pre-application meetings and discussions, and through those discussions, the permitting agencies advised us, and the city has concurred, that we are combining the permits for the rock pinnacle removal with the Burst 1 and 2 expansion project. They wanted to see cumulative impacts, so that'll come up in more significance later. Additionally, in supporting our permit application, the permitting agencies are becoming much more scrutinous as relates to impacts on marine mammals, particularly from underwater impact from pile driving. We're going to have some significant sound and underwater vibrations from pile driving, and those have to be modeled and studies done. So we've got all of that work done, and the science is ready to put into our permit application to satisfy the agencies that we're watching at for whales and seals and sea lions. We are nearly complete with our permit sketches, which basically reflect the 35% design in a much more simplistic manner, because the agencies really don't need to get into the level of detail that we're looking at. And our plan currently is to submit those applications by July 10th. And that will then conclude our current authorization for Phase 1 of the work. So bringing us to the project cost, which has increased considerably between our planning level estimate and our planning report of December 2017, and our 35% estimate, which we gave you in June. I want to note upfront, it's on the last line there, that our decision, together with the city, to go beyond the December planning effort and have another public meeting in February, and then to wrap that up by mid-March, and not to get going on the design until mid-March, put our team in a very tight timeframe to where we've really been two-stepping to get to mid-June on this deliverable. And as a consequence, we were not able to accelerate any of the significant parts of that design that would have allowed us to highlight these additional costs before the very last two weeks that we were putting those together. So our cost estimating, we were not able to really get done until early June. So I didn't want you to think that we'd been kicking this can down the road afraid to share the bad news. It was not the case. But the planning level estimate was, in fact, you know, we've been talking about $40 million. That was the base level estimate. Now, I'll just lay claim to the first thing. We erroneously included only a 30% contingency with that estimate, and that's too tight a contingency to include at the planning level. That escaped my attention. That was my responsibility, and I should have caught that when we issued our report. We should have been reporting that as the more million dollars and been talking instead of honing in on the 40 million. So that was about that range. And because of the, you know, very high-level nature, you can come up with planning work up with some broad geometries on things like float sizes and that sort of thing, but then you really have to have a basis for scaling that against other projects. And we had two pretty good recent projects to scale that off of. One of them was the Icy Strait facility, which we were designers in 2014. That was $17 million for a single berth. The Juno double berth facilities that were finished and opened this year, sorry, in 2017, were $54 million for the two of those. So as we scaled the general size of what we were looking at here, particularly against Juno, but also using HUNA, we rationalized that, you know, the figure that we're coming up with of about $40 million. It seemed right based on those estimates. But I'll talk about why that was not a good assumption moving forward. So those are the difference between the planning level and the design level estimates. Now, these are the, as Carl alluded, these are the changes in scale of the project that have been made since the planning level. And we've got, you know, basically three pairs of bullets here. So at the planning level, and you'll see noted in our report, the original intent was to design for a Type E, or the largest class of vessel, the Quantum class, 1,150-foot cruise ships at berth 1, and then up to 960 feet at berth 2. Well, at 35% design, and through a design review meeting that we had with the city and cruise line agencies, as well as the public meeting that we held in February, it was determined that it would be good for the city to have the flexibility to be able to bring in two of the largest cruise ships that would provide future flexibility, but also in the present sense, when you only had a three-ship day, you could bring your larger ships closer to town if Burst 2 was able to accommodate them, rather than having them out far to the south on Burst 1. So that was a decision that was made without really thinking about the cost, but ultimately we have to cut the cost of those decisions. Second change was at the planning level, and again, this was, you know, based very loosely off what we had at HUNA and Juno as guidance and working with cruise line agencies. We had floats of 400 and 350 foot long designed into the project. Our design review meeting with cruise line agencies and subsequent talks with the cruise lines themselves and some of the captains have indicated, you know, it would be nice to get 450-foot-long floats in there. So we programmed it in for 450, and that's what your cost estimate is based on. Was talking with Ethan Berto late last week from cruise line agencies, and he indicated that they'd already gone through our 35% design, and they were ready to feedback that maybe we could get away with 50 to 70-foot shorter floats. So those are big-ticket items in the project, and those are things that, you know, that has jumped up the cost. And then the third thing, and I'll be able to explain this better with the graphics that follow, but we originally had the shoreline access ramps flayed out from the ends of the births. And we made a change here to reconfigure the north berth at, the north ramp at berth 2 to come in closer to the shoreline. I don't know why this is sort of focused. I'm not familiar with this project. But you see on the north side of berth 2 how we have the passenger access ramp coming back towards the south, whereas originally it's spread out towards the north. What this does is, you know, there's a geometric consequence to that, because we've got these reaction dolphins, which are on the shore side of the floats, to take the brunt of the birthing load off the ships. They have battered piles on them on the back, those angled piles. And you'll see the little box, the house-shaped box suspended there. That's looking down the passenger access ramp, and that goes up and down with the tides. And as that goes up and down, you can see that we would have to pull that, the whole facility further offshore in order to, so that it would not conflict with those battered piles. Whereas if we had that ramp heading off to the, further to the north, we would be able to pull both of those floats in much closer to the existing dock. So it's a bit of a complicated thing to explain, but understand that the water depth drops off very precipitously at both Burst 1 and 2. You've currently got 40 feet, which is the controlling depth right at your face, and it drops off very quickly into over 100 feet of water. So you've got a bathymetric disadvantage, I'll call it, you know, as you move further out, you get into much deeper water, and with that require more longer and larger diameter piling. And with that, the cost goes up almost exponentially. So little impacts like that can have big implications to cost. But the good news is that we can recapture some of those if we kind of reverse some of those decisions. And then the last thing that contributes to the project cost is, you know, as a consequence of starting at a very high level in planning, when we get into design, and particularly on the very short fuse that we had to get from planning at mid-March to 35% design in mid-June, we still had a geotechnical consultant who was working on their conclusions from the borehole drilling and the subsurface profiling. And we didn't have the kind of interface that you would ultimately want to, and that you will ultimately have, between the structural people and the geotech people. So everyone's making conservative assumptions at this point. And as the design iterates and goes on to 65% and then to final design, you've got the interlinking of those disciplines, so that they're able to coordinate and provide a much more refined design. So a lot of the conservancy falls out of the design, and with that, there's a downward pressure on the project cost. So that's really just a function of being very early in the design process. Here's just a quick example we ginned up this afternoon to show kind of the geographic or the bathymetric disadvantage. You'll note the red line, that's your controlling depth contour of minus 40, and it's right along the existing fixed dock. And you'll see on the south of berth 2 with the dolphins there, those are out into 125 feet of water. And the implications of pushing, of flipping that passenger access ramp on berth 2, because we have to keep the birth phase consistent for both of those births, are we've had to push everything 35 feet further out into the water, which puts it about 12 feet deeper, which significantly drives up the piling. And just for comparison, here's Juno, again, with the 40-foot controlling depth contour in red. And you'll see their facilities there, and their facilities are mainly in 80 to 90 feet of water, whereas ours are going up to 125 to 130 feet. So with that, the level of scrutiny that we, you know, needed on the layout and the design and looking at the bathymetry and what that does to the piling, and going through the, you know, several weeks' worth of effort to size and count number of piling needed, you know, this kind of bathymetric disadvantage you have was not captured in doing an apples-to-apples comparison with Juno. So there is good news, and more than just vague hope. We believe that with, even with the current configuration of the facilities, still allowing you to welcome the Quantum class ships, we believe that you can reduce the cost through some value engineering exercise to around the $60 million level. We should not be talking about a $40 million project. We should be looking at a $60 million project. And that, just as a data point for comparison, Junos facilities, which I will note are built for the next smaller class of ships, the Breakaway Plus class, were built for $54 million in 2016 and 17. And with 2.5% to 3% per year escalation, that would come out to, what is that, in $20,000, that would be $59 million. So you're in the right realm there, but still designing for the larger ships. But specifically, and what takes it beyond hope to actual, you know, things that we can specifically hone in and look at, since we've issued the 35% design, we've already been, keep staying on track with, towards 65%. We had to, even before our authorization to do so, in order to stay on track for your bonding initiative in October. And in doing so, we've had our structural engineers and our navigation engineers talking with the geotecs, and we've already been able to drop our mooring loads by 15%. That's some of that conservative assumptions falling out of the estimate. And what that is showing us is that we can go with, we can drop, you know, the number of piling completely. We've got 92 currently in the project, and we feel we can get that down into the low 80s. And perhaps drop the diameter from 60 inches into at least 54, but perhaps as low as 48-inch piling, which further reduces the piling. So that's just a consequence of having had more time to really, really look at the design. But then in terms of the, sorry, and then a second thing we've already looked at, refining the reaction dolphins. We've got three reaction dolphins at 18 piles per float, to reducing those down to two reaction dolphins at eight piles per float. There's actually significant cost savings to doing that. So those are two elements that have come right out of our, you know, design refinement without any change to the function of the project whatsoever. Cruise line agencies has already indicated that perhaps the 450-foot-long float was the Cadillac solution, and maybe the city is looking for a nicely-appointed Buick rather than Cadillac, and that perhaps 50 to 70 feet could be lopped off of each of those floats. And those are big-ticket items. It's about $390 per square feet. Or, yeah, so that's significant cost savings. The other thing we can do is go back and look at how we are configuring the passenger access ramps at berth 2. If the city could live with bringing those out further to the north and having those two ramps quite distant from one another, they'd be about 650 feet apart, then we can pull all the floats back into shallow water, and there would be a consequent cost savings for that. And then the other decision that was made subsequent to the planning work was to increase the capacity for berth 2, so that you've basically got mirror image facilities there, both capable of handling the Quantum class vessels. And if the city would elect to make berth 2 for a smaller vessel, we would not have to design it as robust, and all the structural elements would come down in cost as a result. So as Carl mentioned, that value engineering exercise may be premature because of a number of considerations the city will go through, but next steps to the work and what you'll be considering engaging us on, this tonight's meeting and on your July 5 meeting, is continuing with the rock pinnacle removal, and that's offshore of berth 2. It was felt that that would take longer to get permitted than this project, so that even if this project goes back to the planning and design drawing board, it would be wise to continue with that, so that we could bring that project on stream as early as possible. On the Burst 1 and 2 fixed dock, irrespective of what your expansion is going to look like and what ships you're going to welcome, there are corrosion repairs and upgrades similar to what were done on berth 3 this past winter, with the exception that you don't have a steel barge, which is being upgraded. But the pile wraps all need to be upgraded, and there's some structural elements in the splash sum that need the spray metallizing. And that just protects your asset, and it gives you a good foundation on which to build these expanded facilities. And then the second bullet is, it is respective, or it is dependent, on the vessels that you're bringing in there, and that is the upgrading of perhaps eight or nine ballards along Burst 1 and 2. And there's actually one at the corner of berth 3 that will still be used for tying off these larger ships. And until we know what size ships, or we've confirmed what size ships you're going to bring into each berth, then those upgrades are premature. But those would be costs to the project as well. And we're talking about upgrading 100-ton ballards to 200-ton capacity in general terms. And then with respect to the Burst 1 and 2 expansion, as I mentioned, we're finished Phase 1, or just about finished Phase 1, which is for the 35% design and permitting. And the next phase, and the city had this proposal initially before we started work, is for a final design, the final permitting, securing your permits and bid assistance, getting you an award to a contractor. We've also given you a proposal to deploy a real-time current meter at the entrance to Thomas Basin. It would be installed on the existing dolphin now, with the intent that when that dolphin is removed and a new one put in, that it would be redeployed on the furthest north new dolphin. And what this does is creates a baseline condition for the currents in and out and around Thomas Basin. It will measure them at depth, and it will measure them directionally, as well as amplitude, so that we can then use that information to, with the, and do a case with the cruise ship in place, cruise ship accessing the berth, taking off with the bow thrusters, and a number of different conditions that will allow us to say what the impacts are or are not to the entrance to Thomas Basin, and how people within the basin, particularly near the entrance, might be affected. And then the intent is that that current modeling would continue in real time through Marine Exchange of Alaska, so that people wanting to access the basin at any time could call up that information and know exactly what was happening in those currents as a safety precaution. And then the second, the final bullet is an assessment of the impacts for these larger ships. The Quantum class has these new Azipod bow thrusters, which have a significantly higher thrust and pressure coming off of them towards the mudline. And it would be prudent, as other ports have done, to do a short study on that to see if there's any significant additional impact from that higher current thrust and pressures, particularly on the slope, the rock slope under berth 2. We don't want to create a scour condition, or we at least want to know about it if it's going to happen. And then for the southbound departing ships, the impact of those bow thrusters pushing water into Thomas Basin. So these are several additional elements, and with coaching from Steve Corpron and Carl, we've broken those into smaller pieces, so you can kind of take a menu approach to engage them piece by piece. And that's what I prepared for tonight, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you have, and we're here to work with you tomorrow's and next day. Dave?
Okay, I'm not going to talk about the money because things happen. I guess I'm really surprised to see that the plan, the proposal calls for two big docks at 1 and 2. We were pretty clear through a bunch of variety of discussions that that was not the direction the council wanted to go in. And so I guess if you go back to what the council originally wanted to do, how much does that lower the cost?
She lost the signal.
Yeah. My part wasn't clear.
Yeah. Well, I can't answer that except to say that we did, you know, we had the session in February, and then we subsequently, on that same trip, met with cruise line agencies and with Steve Corpron, and this is what we came out with as part of that evolution. And it was to provide the flexibility for the larger ship at... Well, I can't answer that except to say that we did, you know, we had a, we had the session in February, and then we subsequently, on that same trip, met with the, with cruise line agencies and with Steve Corpron, and this is what we, this is what we came out with as part of that evolution, and it was to provide the flexibility at, for the larger ship at berth two. But I think I can clarify the confusion. I'll say that I miscommunicated what we've provided here. What was decided in February, in the council's clear direction, was not to provide the opportunity to moor two of these Quantum Class ships concurrently. This does not reflect that. This does, this does reflect the pulling back of berth one to the north. What it does do, and what, this was decided in our discussions with the city and with cruise line agencies, it does provide the flexibility for the city to bring a single Quantum Class ship into berth two. So you can't have two concurrently. There's not enough room. Birth one does not extend far enough to the south to allow two of them concurrently. But the decision was made to provide the flexibility, so that on a three-ship day, or perhaps when you had a much smaller ship, you could move that much larger Quantum ship onto berth two and get it closer to downtown. And what that did was it created these identically mirrored facilities. So it's a, it's a concept that provides flexibility to bring Quantum ships into either berth, but not two of them concurrently. And those were the two, those were the two options that were laid out in our meeting in February. We had, we had one option that was, and I'm sorry I didn't come prepared with that presentation, but we had one option that had float one pulled much further to the south, and that was for the two concurrent things. And then the second option was this one that had the flexibility for mooring at both facilities. So I apologize that I misspoke in my presentation on that.
Dick?
Yeah, following that same question, at some point in time, we need to see what's the difference in cost of putting that smaller float in at two versus the larger float to see whether it's worth the flexibility.
Sure.
And I don't know what that, that cost would be. I guess the other thing that, seeing the cost estimates the other night, we're showing a concrete-floating dock, and I was thinking that we were leaning pretty hard toward pontoons of some type rather than concrete. And at some point in time, when we move forward, I think we need to see the cost estimates for both concrete and pontoons, or whatever you want to call them, metal-floating docks versus...
So we did have those decisions, we did have those discussions, both before and after the public meeting, and we actually talked about a, similar to the Huna facility.
Yes.
Possibility of a steel pontoon with a timber superstructure, and that was ruled out. It was felt that that was not probably in the city's best interest, and for a high-capacity float, that you have a lot of throughput, you'd be placing deck all the time, timber deck. So it was felt that that was not an option. We did consider looking at barges, and that's certainly something we can go to, but as you've seen with the complications with berth three and the recoding and the need to do that maintenance every 10 years, this, you know, had several discussions with Steve, and it seemed to be pulling us away from that just by virtue of the fact that the floating concrete berths like they have in Juno are long-term no-maintenance facilities, whereas the steel berths, you would be pulling them out every 10 years to recondition them. So the total project cost savings may not be significant, even if the upfront saving is significant. But we could certainly go back as part of a value engineering exercise and price that out as a...
I guess we just need to see what the cost differences are, because I don't want to knock staff, but we need to know what the decisions are being made.
Of course.
That we can make that may make a difference. I'm like, I don't want a wooden dock. I don't want a wooden deck out there at all. If we were to put floats in there, metal, it's got to be something solid. It's not going to be wood.
Sure.
That's unacceptable. But I think we need to see those, as you move further down the line, we need to see what the numbers are, so we can make some substitutions too, with your guys' input.
And to your initial point, Dick, and it's a good one, if we go back to, I'll just paraphrase, if we go back to a smaller berth, or smaller ships at berth two, what is the cost? So it's, we don't want to get into a, an issue of scaling our costs again, making poor assumptions, and you can imagine there's a significant amount of design effort that would have to be gone through with new loads to see what those, you know, what is the reduction in piling size and number and layout and that sort of thing. So it's not an inconsequential effort. So when I throw up a single slide and show these great value engineering ideas, that's not something that happens in a day or a week. There's a, you know, there's a cost, and probably a good, a good investment to do that.
Young lady, do you have them?
Ah, yeah. So I just, no offense, but I feel like we just got railroaded into a completely different design than what we voted on, but where it was supposed to be berth one, large, berth two, somewhat the same. From what I could tell from looking at the blizz, three seems to accommodate it just fine. I mean, it seems to have gone up, not necessarily out.
Sure.
But I just, I don't like the idea that we vote on one thing, and then now we're sitting here and we're discussing the opposite plan of what we voted on.
Okay. Well, let's talk about that, because I may be an engineer, but I'm not the engineer that drives the train, so I don't want to be railroaded or received to be railroaded.
And I'm not me, neither.
No, no.
That's the only way I can put it.
I'm not, I'm not offended, and I'm glad you brought that up. So when we, when we initially went through the planning effort, and we drew up our planning, our planning work into a report in December, we had approached the city back in, before Thanksgiving, that, hey, we'd like to get going on the design now, and let us get going on the design, and we'll finish off the planning report by the end of December as kind of an adjunct, just to make sure it's memorialized. At that time, you were in a, end of your budgeting process, and it was felt that some additional, because of the, you know, attendance and some additional concerns had been brought up at the various meetings, and we had three of them, it was felt like a fourth meeting would be in order, and to go in with a very focused decision point, A or B, A or B. And we talked about A or B the whole meeting. And this was, this was and did represent that lesser project at that time. This was option A, and option B, I may have them flipped, it might have been B and A, but option B did have the, the location of berth one much further down in front of, in front of Thomas Basin.
Right.
And you did go with the less, less seemingly obtrusive approach. So this does, this does correctly represent the decision point that was made in March after our initial planning study.
If I can just add to that, the council's direction, one, was not to overly encroach on the seafood processors, and to do two post-Panamax ships was not the objective. And that's the plan that you have before you tonight. You cannot do two post-Panamax ships at one and two. You can do post-Panamax at one and a Panamax at two, and that was the, the direction that we, we brought and the council gave to us. Dick's point, you know, on the type of float, Steve and I did discuss that when it was explained to me that wood was an option, and that's what they used up in Huna. I know the problems we've had with wood, and I didn't want to go anywhere near that either. So we made that one, one decision.
Mark? But doesn't this design allow for a Class E at either or?
It does allow that additional flexibility.
Is that different from what we did? Wasn't it a Class E at one and a smaller ship at two? Is that revolved?
That's what we all thought it was. Now, if you were wrong, we all, we all got it wrong together, which indicates a problem.
So let me, let me say that, just to reiterate, the initial planning study and the first three meetings that we had on that culminated in November with the, that we memorialized in December in the planning report, that we do a Type A at berth one, sorry, a Type E vessel, largest ship at berth one, and a smaller Type E, A vessel at berth two. That's when we did the last planning level estimate. Then when we reopened the can of worms in the new year, we went forward with the two options that had the flexibility to put the ship at either berth, and that's what we went to the public meeting on in, in February, and I don't remember the exact date, but we, we did make a follow-up presentation to council on that. So if we didn't highlight that as a change that had been made, then I'll take responsibility for that. But this, again, does correctly represent the decision point we came to in February.
Mark?
Can you give us any idea, cost-wise, the difference between what we, between this iteration and what we thought we voted for? With just a Class E at berth one?
I don't have that. I'd be pulling that out of the air. It wouldn't, it wouldn't do justice to the importance of the decision.
Understood.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
So it wouldn't make much of a difference then?
I think it will make a significant difference, but I don't want to throw a number out that doesn't have, you know, doesn't have the rigor behind it.
Understood.
And I think you deserve better.
Thank you.
So as a comment, after visiting the captain aboard the ship while it was at berth three, where they can utilize it, it's not ideal. When they're in Juno, they get five ramps down, and with that many passengers, they need to get them off, and they need to get back in a timely manner. And that, that's what we're striving for with these floats, is to be able to get it up, ramps down, so that they can do their business in town, and not be just hung up in a ship.
And these do have, each of these floats have programmed in a generous, generously-wide passenger-access ramp and a combined passenger-vehicle access ramp, and they are almost identically scaled to the ones in Juno. So if, if, and it does work in Juno, and so we emulate what works, and so it'll work here as well.
Any other questions for Charlie? All right, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave this up or close it down?
What's that?
Leave this up or close it down?
I think we're all right.
I actually set fire to a piece of paper and claimed...
There you go.
These burned very hot.
Science project.
All right. So you've heard the presentation, had discussions, or anything else but just different points? And so then, as Carl laid out, we have alternative motions with the lot that was laid on the table. Do I have a motion?
I'll read it. Is it the exclusive, specific?
Yes.
Okay. Motion number one, exclusive of specific tasks as may be authorized by contract change order. I move the city council to direct the city manager to advise Moffett Nickel to suspend further work associated with contract number 17-35, design of berth one and two expansion, pending city review of alternative financing options for the project. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Emily, do you have anything to add?
I pretty much agree with that.
Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll?
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
That brings us to motion two?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Pending city review of alternative financing options for the project, I move the city council to direct the city manager to cease further work to place a bond proposition for the reconfigurations of berth one and two before the voters for consideration at the regular election of October 2, 2018.
Been moved and seconded. Mark?
Nothing more.
You need to figure out what we're doing.
No discussion, please call the roll.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
So not a motion on the...
I think it's in the thing.
So those alternative motions took care of item?
Two and three.
No, three, there's still some work that we need to be done.
Three is there's some...
And is there something in one that we need to do, Carl?
One is addressed by the first motion you just adopted. So item three on the original agenda, budget transfer amendment number two, would be the modeling of the current in Thomas Basin. The staff's recommending that that one go forward. And for the sake of trying to keep this stuff straight, amendment number two would now become amendment number one, because we're not going to approve amendment number one.
Correct. Amendment number two becomes an amendment number one. Item three?
Your Honor, I move the city council to direct the city manager into amendment number one to contract 1735, design of berth one to expansion with Moffett and Nickel at a cost of $68,930. Authorize a budget transfer of $68,930 from appropriated reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund to the Port Department's 2018 berth one and two expansion capital account, and approve funding in the amount of $68,930 from the Port Department's 2018 berth one and two expansion capital account.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Carl? We're just going to set up so that we can monitor those through, through a period of time and have that data ready for us when we start moving ahead. Is that content here?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
So that brings us to item number four, and that's amendment number two, contract number 17-16, design and planning and permitting for removal of berth two rock pinnacle Moffett Nickels.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Dick.
I move the city council to approve amendment number two in the amount of $165,097 to contract number 1716, design of planning and permitting for the removal of berth two rock pinnacle between the city and Moffett Nickel, bringing the total contract amount to $528,341. Authorizing the funding from the Port Department's rock pinnacle removal capital account, and directing the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Dick?
No, I think we need to move it. I probably have a question about, what's the timing on it at this point in time? And then when we get done, I've got another question.
Charlie? Yeah. So Dick, in response to timing, we're ready to continue on the course. We've gotten through the 35% design and permitting. This is just continuing on the design course. I did not come prepared with a schedule and to let you know what the, you know, what the exact timing is on those deliverables, but our intent is to get that done principally by the end of the summer, and to have the permit applications finalized and end by that point, and be negotiating with the agencies on your behalf. This is a project that is very, I would say it's very designed, non-intensive, and very permitting-intensive. It's going to be all about the discussions and getting to yes with the agencies.
I guess I was probably fishing for when it might, the rock might get to remove.
Oh, I see. Yeah, and that's, that's anyone's guess at this point. We've done a pre-application meeting with them, which has indicated that it's achievable. So no one said, you know, no, you can't do it. We do have an underwater blasting specialist on our team who's done other work in and around sensitive marine mammal areas in southeast Alaska, and we're putting the science together that is going to, you know, measure the blast impacts and vibrations. And then with marine mammal observation and the scrutiny that the agencies will put on it, and the restrictions that they'll put on the construction, we have every reason to believe that we'll be able to push this through. And the thought is that we're probably looking at 16 to 22 months to permit that project. But that's, that's our best guess at this point, and based on, you know, the agencies feeding back to us.